Again soon, along those lines, Gaslight Village, Thanksgiving every year has the tree lighting ceremony coming up, starting at 6:30 there, but come early to get a spot. So, good things kind of coming in that regard. So, once again, thank you to all the staff. So, yes, there's an election, please vote. This is a chance for your voice to be heard. And thank you to the staff that runs that. Thank you Doug for running the training on the zoning workhouse also at that training. It was, we can always be getting better at everything that we're doing. And I think that we know that there will be a couple of new commissioners sitting out here. And I think that training, I realize we just had it, but however, I think certainly sharing the information that we're giving our kind of that, along with some personalized attention there, I think, very helpful. Thank you for taking time and going through that. So, I think I've already talked too much, so thank you everyone for your patience in that.
Do you have anything for Doug?
The only I'll add is after the meeting, if anybody wants to stay back around here and help set up for the election tomorrow, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but do we have a new camera back there now?
No.
Sorry.
That's why I'm back here.
Like I hadn't heard it came in, it looks different than.
I know, it's sick.
Not yet, alright. But we did approve it, so we will be getting better equipment. So, those of you that are watching and trying to listen and having difficulty, we are getting better equipment. It's been approved, so it'll be coming. Very happy about that. And I also wanted to thank public safety. Not only did they have that great open house, and honestly, the number of kids that were dressed up like firemen and policemen, so cute. And one father told me, yeah, this is all he wants to wear all the time. So, the fact that he could actually wear it today at the firehouse made him so excited. It was so cute. But they have also this summer, I would say they've given, they've gone to 12 block party, I mean, two dozen block parties, but I think it's probably at least three dozen. I wish none of them are in the room here. But they did dozens and dozens of block parties this year. And it's so good to see them interact with the kids, just like they're doing before school. And really making some, some good relationships and just proud of them all the time. And as far as the Manhattan Park goes, I too apologize. I did try to say, I believe I said at the meeting, the same thing that Commissioner Ziegler just said. And that is, no matter what we do, and I always like to reinforce this, no matter what we put in place, both with the city's master plan or the parks' master plan, that always, these are ideas that have been vetted through the people who get in to talk about it and go through conversations and do some exercises. But we always know that whatever gets into that, into those master plans, they don't automatically happen. We have multiple of meetings, both at, it will happen at the Parks and Rec area. It'll happen, it may happen at the planning commission, depending on what is involved. It will happen at the city commission. There'll be many, many opportunities for people to weigh in. So, I just like to always reinforce that because whatever is put together in that plan is just step one. It's got a lot of ways to go. And many things won't happen, some things hopefully will. So, thank you. And I also talked to some residents individually afterwards. But thanks for bringing it up and certainly we apologize if it mean to be flip. And then also for the ZBA training, that was, I agree with all that's been said, that was really great. Thank you for putting that together and we'll look for more opportunities. We usually try to start with how to run meetings and what are, what's the correct rules of order. And we can bring people in to discuss that. Alright, thank you. Well, that was a long intro. Next on the agenda is our regular agenda items. First one is presentation of audited financial statements for FY '18 and '19. And Karen, are you there? She's going to take team you.
Yeah, I just want to introduce Peter Hefner is here to go over our audit for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Please welcome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I did meet with your finance committee last week. And we walked from the back of the report to the front of the report, starting with the small funds, working our way through the larger funds and then to the government-wide financial statements. Talked about pension, a lot of aspects of the audit. So, I was going to just walk through some slides with you. But first of all, I just wanted to talk about our opinion. It's on page one of the financial statements. And I always like to point out that the financial statements are the responsibility and that it is our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements based on audit. At the very bottom of page one, I'm going to summarize our opinion, which is two pages long. It's our opinion that the financial statements for the city of East Grand Rapids present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations, and cash flows where applicable of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, as well as the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion, that you are following the standards as established by the governmental accounting standards board as required by the state of Michigan. And so, that's as good as you can do with the opinion on the financial statements. Now, in addition to our opinion on the financial statements, we provide an opinion on the system of internal control that's utilized to prepare the financial statements. It's at the very back of the report. It's on page 63. And I'm going to summarize that opinion as well. And I'm specifically looking at the fourth paragraph on that page. And I'm just going to point out the last sentence. We did not, or the second to last opinion, or sentence. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with your system of internal controls over financial reporting. And that opinion is provided in accordance with government auditing standards. We've, governmental accounting standard, or governmental auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards in when we conducted the audit of your financial statements. Following that opinion right at the very front of the report is the management's discussion and analysis. And that provides a nice summary of, it lists out all of the financial highlights for the current year. It talks about what capital assets were added, what long-term liabilities were repaid or introduced. It also talks about what was considered in next year's budget. So, that's a great place to direct the interest of public or the media because it provides a nice summary at a very high level. The first slide that I have is a picture of the very high-level perspective of your operation. And we're looking at all of your governmental funds, which would be general fund, major, local streets, the multitude of funds that you use to operate throughout the year, presented on a full accrual perspective. What we're showing is to what extent are the operations of the city, the governmental activities self-supporting. So, you can see general government. The blue line represents the expenses. The light purple represents the program revenues. And you can see to what extent are these operations self-supporting. So, the differential between the blue and the light purple represents to what extent are you using unrestricted or property taxes, state shared revenues, unrestricted interest income to cover the cost of the operation. Very typical picture here when we take a look at public safety with many of the cities, actually virtually all of the cities that we work with, public safety is the largest expense and generally the largest utilizer of property taxes or those unrestricted dollars. Public works, I just wanted to point out here that in the light purple, there is the Act 50, or gas and weight taxes received from the state of Michigan in that program revenue component. It shows up as an operating grant. And then we can see parks and recreation, to what extent it's self-supporting. So, very typical perspective here. I would say parks and rec, you probably have a larger expense than the typical city. Now, the next picture that I'm showing you here is just how diversified and where are the sources of the revenues for your governmental activities coming from. I don't think this is substantially different from prior years. But where you are different from many cities is to, many cities are more dependent on the state share revenues, operating grants, capital grants. They are not as dependent on property taxes. I like to see more property taxes in this picture, just because it shows that you're kind of driving your own, driving your own operation versus awaiting someone to fund it on your behalf. This is your, a picture of your investment in capital assets and net of related debt. So, to what extent have you put infrastructure in the ground? Governmental activities are typically streets, fire trucks, buildings, things of that nature. Business-type activities, that's your water and sewer operation. Just shows to what extent are you putting infrastructure in place, less the depreciation, less any outstanding debt. So, you are consistently putting dollars into infrastructure in the city and it's apparent from this picture. Which is not necessarily always the picture that I see in audit processes. So, that's positive. This is a picture of your general fund revenues. And your general fund, we're no longer talking about all your governmental funds, but your largest governmental fund, your general fund. It just shows what's occurring with property taxes. You have a strong property tax base. You can see what's occurring with state share revenues. It's not a large portion of your funding, as we saw in the pie graphs, but not substantially changing. Then you can see to what extent are our items being funded by charges for services and other, other can bounce around when you receive grants and things of that nature. But you can see what's funding your general operation here, taxes, property taxes. This is a picture of your expenditures of your general fund. And just, I think if you just take a look at it, you can see where the most substantial portion of the dollars are going. And to what extent is it increasing inflationary pressure on those operations. This is a picture of your general fund, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfer out. And I believe you have a policy of 20% to 25% of expenditures and transfers. So, you're slightly above your goal. This is a picture, and if I'm going too fast, by all means stop me or ask any questions you may have. But this is just a historical perspective of your water and sewer fund, which are combined. So, both operations are operated out of the same fund. It's operated on the full accrual basis of accounting, just as a business would be operated. And it just shows to what extent are the charges or the revenues in excess of expenses or less than expenses. And you can see that you consistently have a positive increase in your net position. Now, when we take a look at the next slide, you'll see why you need to do that in order to put infrastructure in the ground or replace portions of your system. Here's a picture of your cash balance of that very same fund. Even in years when you, when you had a positive net income, that's the full accrual basis of accounting. So, depreciation is being reflected in there, which doesn't impact cash. And also, the purchase of capital assets is not being reflected in that income statement except for to the extent that it's being depreciated. So, it gets a little complicated. And this is more of a balance we follow from the perspective of budgeting from year to year. Do we have the cash balance to put more infrastructure in place or do replacements or things of that nature? So, just a picture, this year you put a very substantial amount of infrastructure in place. It was shown in the first slide. And keep in mind that first slide depreciation is trying to drive that number down. And you're actually putting more dollars in than depreciation is able to pull that number down. Are there any questions I can answer regarding the audit process or the financial statements? You did go into pretty great detail last Friday, and so.
So, let me ask, is there anyone who's on the finance committee that had some aha moments or had still had a question or something that they might make sure to point out?
Yeah, I think there was some key points. I think we had a really good discussion, but you had really good questions to talk through everything. I think, and obviously, we don't need to go through all the detail. I guess the biggest thing is that we've been paying down debt. We've been making massive amounts of investments in infrastructure. There's still a long way to go. And fundamentally, continuing to do, I think, what, 8.4 miles roughly of roads that got worked down. And overall, I think we're good enough. To clarify, I think Karen, the 20 to 25 is really our budgeting number. And obviously, the staff has continued to do a good job of being able to somehow, sometimes end up with a little bit more kind of at the end. But that's kind of our main target whenever we budget, right? So, we budget to maybe spend down some balance. But if the staff can come up with cost savings alone, like, can you just kind of clarify?
Yeah. So, when we budget, our policy says that we budget between 20 and 25%. We end it closer. The graph he showed was our total fund balance. We do have some of that fund balance that has been set aside for like the turf replacement and for some other matters. So, his was a little bit higher. I think it was closer to 30% if you look at the graph. We really ended closer to 26%. So, we'll use that 26% to add to our budget. We'll probably put a budget out that'd be closer to the 20%. So, when we looked at the budget for 2020, we budgeted right at 20%. We did those calculations when we went over our fourth quarter financial statements. Again, we're going to end up a little bit higher than we thought. But again, it gives us some cushion to budget because we never budget right at that zero mark. We'd have to cut some programs to have our revenues equal our expenditures. And so, what we do is we budget for some of those additional expenditures so we don't have to cut programs knowing that we're going to end up break even. And so, it's just a tactic that we do. Because if we were to budget right at zero base, we would have to cut a program to get to there. So, we know we have that flexibility in there.
Thank you for clarification. The chart looked a little different than when we said 2025. So, I think it was just for those who are not in the level of detail that all of the commissioners I know get into. And I think it's important aspect for us to be aware of. I think that key points, you know, once again, we've been paying down debt. We've been making investments in infrastructure. We've got a long way to go, but I think that there's, we're on the right track. So, I'm sure other commissioners want to comment all around the finance committee here.
You want to jump in or I can?
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I guess at its broadest level, I just want to thank Mr. Hefner for coming in. I mean, we spent a good hour, maybe even over an hour at the finance committee, really drilling down to a much greater level of detail than we're going through tonight. We had some great discussions around our defined pension, defined benefit, remaining liability and kind of where we stand on that and what some potential strategies or ideas are around how we handle that going forward. Good discussions with regards to our healthcare expenditures and kind of where we stand on that. And just kind of otherwise drilling down to an additional level of detail within our finances that I greatly appreciated. I think the other really, kind of the carryaway for me is that, kind of commenting and echoing on Commissioner Ziegler's point, we are, we are hitting our goals in terms of maintaining our cash reserves in terms of our target for what we want to have set aside financially, the rainy day fund, for lack of a better way of putting it. And I think that that's an important goal for us to continue to meet. But the challenge that we have is that in order to do so, we have had to be, at some points, very conservative in terms of not just some operational, you know, cuts and belt tightening in some areas, but also with regards to capital. And I'm glad to see that overall, we're still continuing to invest in capital. But we have aging infrastructure all over the place, streets, sidewalks, water and sewer lines. And we're going to have to continue to invest in those areas in the long term. But that's not just a short-term trend for us. That's very much a long-term trend. As a older, built-out community, we have tons of water lines that are, you know, still 100-year-old or near it. We have many streets and sidewalks that still need to be gotten to. I drive down a section of Pine Crest every day that hopefully will be on the target list in the next couple of years. And so, you know, we're well aware of the fact that we're, we have a long-term, well, some long-term challenges, but we're doing what we can to meet them effectively.
But more importantly, we have a plan going forward. Most communities don't have a plan. They don't know what's coming up. They don't know what's under the ground. And we know all of that. So, we'll have a plan put together for that.
Yeah, we're, you know, I'm very confident that we are, we are ahead of the curve compared where we're at to other municipalities in that regard. And there's, you know, a host of, a host of people to thank for getting us on the right path, going back 20-plus years to when we first switched away from a pension plan to a defined contribution 401K plan. Is just one example of that.
I just said that because we said we have a long way to catch up. But I, we have a plan. It's in place. We know what's happening in what order, you know, the best of our ability, because we know what's underground. Everybody does. Appreciate that. But when our pension plan is closed, which it is, which is a good thing, it might be a little tighter on the front end, but it's always, it will be better for us on the back end when we reach that cliff in 2026, is it?
I'm not sure of the exact date, but ultimately by closing that plan should drive down costs, you know, when you have, many of the people are off the plan, obviously. But I'm not sure if it come out.
I guess Karen, is it 2026?
Well.
And they'll say change.
It's 2026. It has some legacy costs still.
But we're still in a better position than a lot of other communities in that regard. Anyone else? If you don't mind, could you just go over a little bit our long-term debt? I think that there is some confusion among the board, the commission. And so, I think it'd be good to go over what some of the big pictures are for this long-term debt. So, the first one is that.
I'm trying page 39, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, page 39, yep. Page 39. The, the Series 2012B, and I think that we, those are supposed to go through 2033. And Karen, I think they're probably about 12 years old at this point. Is that right? Here.
It would be the same major as the community center building. So, is that about 2006? And so, you're 2000.
And that one is the one that we still, this is our only public bond left, is that correct?
Correct. And this year it's new where they did, we could have spent it better, but there was a new accounting standard that had a split, our public placement bonds from our private placement bond. So, this is our only bond that's currently being sold on the market.
So, and so.
We refinanced the other ones, the last one being in 2015. But all of the other ones have been purchased by banks as the private placements. We no longer have to rate those bonds.
Right. So, the only bond that we have that's rated is from 2006 to 2006. That's the only one that's rated. The rest are not rated.
They're no longer rated, correct?
Right. Because we changed it. And one of them, we took from our only AAA bond that we had. We got rid of that a few years ago because we have a much better rate. We're saving money every year by having a private bond.
Yeah, but if some of you were around for that one, that was the Michigan Transportation Bond. If you remember, Mecatello Bank came in and purchased that one. That one is our AAA rated bond. But when we sold that, we no longer have a rating on that one because we don't have to maintain that because they don't maintain that. So, we only have the rating on the community complex, and that one is a AA+.
And so, it's not a bad thing that we don't have our AAA bond anymore. It's actually a very good thing because we save money when we switch to AAA.
Yeah, we saved about $80,000 over the course of five years. And so, I know it was hard to give up, you know, we could tell, yeah, we have a AAA, but we saved $80,000. I know Brian and I had that discussion. I'm like, oh, that's our one that was rated really well. But this, the one that is publicly traded, that's been a AAA+ since we conceived that one. We have not, the rating has not gone up and down on that one. It's just the rating agency has given us.
Double A+.
I'm sorry. Double A plus.
Alright. And then the other, then we have that private placement bond. And what else are other things in here that is interesting, if at all?
Really, the most substantial portion of your long-term debt are, is the initial bond on there. The outstanding balance is $6.995 million. And the remainder, they're really not a very substantial total of $850,000. Where you are fairly unique is if you turn to the next page and you look at your business-type activities, which is for water and wastewater, you know all the same things. That'd be not typical of many cities. Many cities have financed some of that infrastructure that they have in bond, or the infrastructure that they have in the ground. In addition to this, long-term liabilities associated with bonding or notes, there are also several liabilities reported on your statement of net position which relate to that pension and both have. And those are the three components of the long-term liabilities of the city. So, really, for the most part, it's that one facility bond. The remainder, pretty insubstantial.
Right. And like you say, that's unique and because we've really worked hard on funding, planning, understanding what we need. And so, I like, and thank you for pointing that out, that it's unique how we're funding our infrastructure.
Yeah, that's.
We're paying for it.
Yes, yeah, you're actually paying for it and so that you don't have to pay interest.
Right.
That's the positive.
One thing that was helpful for, I think, for us in our finance community is to kind of understand like the reality of what each of these is, right? So, I think the first one listed there is our community center that we're all enjoying significantly. The next, the first private placement was the Wealthy Pool. The next one down is the Wealthy Streetscape, which actually will be done, our final interest and principal payment will be in April, April 2020. So, this coming April there, so that'll be gone. And then the last two things are things that we took on more recently. But look at the interest rates that we could get versus the opportunity to put some, have some extra cash on hand to work towards paying down pension debt. It was a huge opportunity for us in that regard, but that'll be gone once again in 2023. So, I think that was kind of a key thing. I think we paid down about a half million dollars. I think it was the number we throw up.
438,000.
There we go. So, thank you for being more precise. So, I think along those lines, you know, sometimes it's nice to be able to put this into real terms in our minds. This is what we're actually, what we've all been able to enjoy by having this out there.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? Thank you, that was very helpful.
Thank you, and thank you to your staff too. Very professional and allow us to get this job done efficiently and effectively. Thank you.
Amen, thank you. Alright, so, the act, thank you very much. And that was Agenda Item Four. So, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, and zoning variance hearing at the request of Tanya Vandembosh of 947 Lakeside to allow an detached garage. And Alec, Miss Akar will present first. And I did want to mention on this one, we have an A and B on our agenda, but B was withdrawn. They made a change, so we aren't worrying about B, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. So, if you remember at the last meeting, they received a zoning variance for rear and side yard setbacks. And they were supposed to come back to this meeting for the roof overhang. However, they turned back the roof overhang to the one-foot allowed encroachment, so they no longer have to apply for that variance. However, at the engine time, it was noticed or came to note that the rear yard setback actually wasn't 2.7 feet. It was closer to 1.8 feet. And so, the second 2.7 on the survey, both of these are referring to the side, and this one was not referring to the rear. So, after second measurements, 1.8 feet is the actual measurement there. So, we do have to re-hear a rear yard setback for the 1.8 feet. So, if anyone has any further questions, I know we saw this last, last meeting, so.
Two meetings.
Two meetings ago? Yeah, two meetings ago, I'm sorry.
Time flies, are you?
Time flies, and you have fun.
So, is there any more explanation as to what happened with how the, I guess it's 11 inches, but as to like how that happened? I mean, was there a new survey that was done or someone looked at it and realized, oh, the garage isn't actually placed where it shows in the diagram? Like, how did that come about?
Yeah, there was, the rear neighbor had some concerns with it. And so, there were other things going on with property, like with fences too, and, you know, we're in the right spot. So, they closed your look, came to the result of 1.8.
And the garage has, has been constructed in that spot? I mean, that's where there is.
Correct, yes. And this, that 1.8 feet and the 2.7 on the side were the original setbacks of the previous garage as well.
Quick point of clarification, I guess, too. I'm trying to make sure you understand that, I think, was it the, the garage was built, and I'm sure the applicant will help share some insight on this too, but the garage was built where the previous foundation was?
Correct.
Okay. And as it turns out, the previous foundation was at the 1.8? Is that kind of what we're saying?
Correct, yes.
That we figured out? Okay. So, but from your indications though, it's, it's pretty much built where it was planned to be built. It just turns out the measurement's different than what we thought it was.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And so, we will open up a public hearing on this. Anyone wants to speak to this agenda item? And now would be the time to talk and speak to this. We always allow the applicant to speak first.
Hello. It's time to get much, I think it's my clear time. Nice to see you all again. An explanation for the survey. When I purchased the home, through my Realtor and myself, we had the property actually surveyed. And through Blazza, surveyors came back with the current survey you're seeing, which also matched the previous homeowner's survey. So, you can understand my dismay when we're pretty much wrapped up to have a neighbor dispute that survey. And to honor her, home specialists came and had, I think, even two surveys done. And they were in line with my neighbor's survey. So, I don't know why there was a discrepancy among all of these surveys. But just to mitigate the situation, we immediately cut back the eaves that were built in the same print that was there prior. If you recall, we renovated the garage and expanded just on two sides of that garage, but left the roof and the overhangs to match what was existing. So we went ahead and cut that back. And there was also a fence on what we thought was the property line. I immediately had that moved out, just to stay in line with what the neighbors' desires were. And I can let Erin expand on that a little bit. But that's, and, you know, I hire a surveyor, I expect their information to be right. So I don't know why there are so many varying surveys on this property.
How many different survey companies were employed?
I had one, Erin, I think you had.
We received one.
One, and then our neighbor had one as well.
So there are three different companies?
Yeah.
And they all had different results?
Mine was different. I believe that Home Specialist was closer to what my neighbor's survey was indicating.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya.
Sorry, anyone else would like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing no one running up, Blazza's right up here. And ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the variance with the setback at one point eight feet as described.
Support.
And that has nothing to do with the roof, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and support, comments?
I, I'll go first. I'm sympathetic to the problem with surveyors because I had the exact same problem when I was building a fence last summer. So it turns out, depending on which side you measure from, you get a different answer sometimes. So I understand how that can happen and how frustrating that can be. Applaud the applicant for doing this the right way, coming in and making sure that we get this done correctly, for cutting back the eaves to make sure that we can take the roof overhang off where it might be problematic. And because, was, I supported this last time based upon essentially building this on the old foundation and leaving enough room to get things done, I'm confident those conditions are all still the same. So happy to support it again.
Anyone else? Alec, I have a question. What other options are there? It sounds to me like this is the best option that there is to fix this.
In terms of voting, or?
No, I'm just, I'm just looking, I read through the narrative and looking at what's going on. And having to relocate the garage would be extremely difficult. This is really, they're between a rock and a hard place here.
I agree.
All right, and, that's all I had to say. Okay, so we have a motion to approve in a second.
I just have one more comment here. I just, I wanted to make sure, first of all, that, that we're adopting the entirety of the staff's comments with regards to the reason supporting the variance. Mr. Misakar's memo.
Thank you, yeah, there we go.
Some of the things that we were intended to learn. And so I would, I guess a friendly amendment for the motion would be that we would be moving to approve the variance based upon staff's comments in terms of the memorandum and support, as well as any individual comments that commissioners choose to have. So, so that's number one. Number two, I want to really emphasize here that, to me, what makes this a fairly easy call to support is the fact that this is a non-conforming lot in terms of width, that this is a fifty-foot wide lot rather than a seventy-two-foot wide lot. And therefore, that, that really creates very significant constraints in terms of garages and side yard setbacks and what have you. And so that, that is, to me, the special circumstance that creates the need for a variance. And that fifty-foot wa, fifty-foot width is not a result of anything that the applicant did. That's just the size of the lot. So, and I don't think there's a detriment here. I think, as Mr. Misakar has noted, based on the mayor's question, this really is the best solution under the circumstance.
So this is a motion, I mean, amendments?
Yeah, it, it can be. I was, I was suggesting that we might do it as, as kind of a friendly amendment to it, but that we, that the motion to approve, that we explicitly indicate that the motion approving the variance is for the reasons stated in Mr. Misakar's memo and support.
I might have even said that, I said as written, I don't know. I was, it cares, so I'm fine if we need to motion it and vote it, that's fine, too.
Okay. Do you need us to? Ms. Miller, Ms. Hammer, are okay with that? We can add that.
Yes, I approve.
All right, so we have, it has been amended, and we have the motion to approve. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And no? Thank you. Thanks for bearing with us through all this. Next item on the agenda is a zoning variance hearing at the request of Charles and Brittany Searsant? Am I close? All right, Searsant, all right. Usually you pronounce the second vowel, there's an I and an E, and I am able to tell you that. So, okay, so Alec, please present.
So the applicants at twenty-three forty-two Oakwood Drive requesting two zoning variances for reduced side yard setback and reduced total side yard setback in order to convert a detached one-stall garage into a two-stall garage. They're asking for a side, or at least side yard setback of three point five feet along the western property line right here, creating a total side yard setback of fifteen point four feet instead of the required eighteen feet. So it'd be technically two separate variances, but they kind of go hand in hand here. The existing one-stall garage received a zoning variance in two thousand and seven for its reduced side yard setback of six point two feet instead of the required seven feet. Initially, it was a detached one-stall garage on the side of the house, and so the variance was basically to attach that one-stall garage to the house. All of those zoning requirements have been met. Going through the standards, this is, I've been looking at options for creating a two-stall garage. This is really the, one of the, really the only options. There is a pool in the backyard. Creating a detached garage would be kind of out of the question unless they were to totally redo their entire rear yard with a pool. In terms of the land itself, there's nothing that makes it uniquely, or unique compared to adjacent neighbors. It's a conforming lot in our two zoning district. There's no other natural features on the land that makes it, makes it unique. Is there any, is there any questions? I'll be having to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Alec?
And I think this illustration is a little better job of showing.
Thank you, because that's really what I was going to try to figure out. That was going to be my question, thank you. So you want to walk through that?
Yeah, so you can kind of tell they use an existing picture of the one-stall garage. It kind of ends right about here. And so the black pen is showing how they like to expand to the two-stall garage. And I believe they'll be taking out, is there a side door right here?
Yep.
So it'll also be, the garage would actually be extending this way as well, just to try and maximize that space.
Any other questions? Alec, you had items C, staff has no comments. I've never seen that before.
That one's more subjective. You know, there's, it's kind of, the eye to behold, the eye to behold, there's, you know, there's a substantial detriment to a neighbor. So I said there's no comments from staff.
And so in addition to adding that side where it says enclosed, patio to create new garage storage, is that all new, I mean, that's happening at the same time?
Correct, yeah. So it wouldn't just be the garage, it'd also be that space behind the garage.
Right. And it doesn't, we don't have any issue with, it doesn't look like the percentage of ground cover or anything like that, doesn't, isn't affected?
Nope, I believe the applicant covers that there.
You know, I meant to ask about the last one, too. Is there, this one, we had a couple of comments in the back of the packet. Did we have any sense then from neighbors, I mean?
Nope, unless.
There was the, there was another here today. All right. Seen any other questions? So we'll take public comment. So now's public comment. We always give the applicants a first chance to speak. Give your name and address, even though we know who you are. Thank you.
Charles Searsant, twenty-three forty-two Oakwood. Thank you so much for the hearing. So I just wanted to add on, this is, so you saw that, kind of using an idea. So the actual setback is not going to go to the, to the current roof line. It's actually going to go to the wall, but not the actual roof line. So the idea is to do a step-down gable. We think that the overall appearance of the volume of that will look a little bit better and less obtrusive from the sidewalk. And the, the neighbors, I'll show that, too. This is the current look of it right here. So the idea is that we move in towards, so we take out this standard hinge door and move the garage door in towards that. Doing that with the proposal that we've set forward actually still only gives us a fourteen-foot garage that's still on a small side, except the standard sixteen-foot that most people have. So, but we, we know that, you know, that would be within a foot and a half of the property line. It seems to be a big ask, so. All the neighbors that I've talked to are in overwhelming support of it. I do have three more letters, signatures from immediate neighbors who are with the high side of our house that's supportive that I could absolutely show you. Yeah, the, we've looked at really every other way to try to do this without going towards that property line, without redoing the variance. Pool in the backyard we didn't put in. We've contemplated filling it in. My five-year-old and three-year-old would disown me as a bond, so that's not on the table. And I really do feel, I did some real rudimentary math on it. If we actually remove what you see, you know, if we remove that right there and put a driveway into the back and do it, and did it detach, I think it would actually be in violation of impermeable space. There's, with that pool, well, maybe if we remove the pool out. But yeah, I mean, it would be, it'd be real close there, so. Yeah, I hope my proposal was thorough and straightforward. And also, we have Architect Nathan Funkus here as well, if you had any specifics about the actual architecture.
Mr. Searsant? Yeah, just real, real quick, as we said, thanks for coming in and showing this picture that we're looking at here was very helpful as well. You had an email from Kristen Gardtrell, if I'm pronouncing that right?
Correct, yep.
Was she the neighbor on the side that would be directly, most directly impacted by this? Is that?
No, that's correct, yep. She is due, she is, yeah.
All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this agenda item? If so, please come up. Seeing no one. We'll close the comment and ask for a motion, please.
Motion to, I'm sorry, Ms. Schaff, do these need to be broken into two different, because there are two different requests? Or should I do it all as?
I think because it's all one project, one building, we can do it all together.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the variance request by the applicant to request a least side yard setback of three point five feet instead of the required seven feet, and to request a total side yard setback of fifteen point four feet instead of the required eighteen feet for the reasons set forth in Mr. Misakar's support.
We have a motion and support, comments?
I guess I'd just add to, to kind of amplify the comments in Mr. Misakar's memo. I think we do have a unique circumstance with regards to special conditions and circumstances here because of the pool in the backyard. That was a pool that was not put in by the applicant, but by the private owner. So it's not a self-created circumstance. And I do believe, even though staff did not comment with regards to substantial detriment, the fact that, A, the immediate neighbor and so many other neighbors indicated letters of support, submitted letters of support, and B, the examples that were provided in terms of the number of other two-stall garages in the immediate neighborhood indicate that this would not be a substantial detriment. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Walters said it very well, I agree with everything that he said.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor of supporting this, please say yes.
Yes.
Say yes. Against, say no. It passed, thank you. All right, so that is Agenda Item Six. We have an Agenda Item Seven, zoning variance hearing at the request of Steve Capadonia of twenty-seven thirty-three Albert. And Alec will also present.
So we have another variance request for a detached garage at twenty-seven thirty-three Albert Drive. The applicant is requesting to rebuild their garage, a side yard setback of one foot. Currently, the garage is right on the property line at zero feet with a conforming rear setback of, the site plan shows three foot ten inches, but I believe in the narrative is a different measurement, so the applicant would need to clarify that. But either way, both those measurements would be conforming. So they're requesting to reconstruct a new garage that's two feet wider, so it'd be twenty-two by twenty feet with a one-foot side yard setback instead of the required three-foot setback. All of these zoning requirements have been met. The applicant states, like many do with these types of detached garage variances, that it is difficult to maneuver a second car into the most, the inside section of the garage. And so having the three-foot setback would be difficult to maneuver a car in there. City records show that the garage was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. If you didn't know, the city didn't have zoning until nineteen sixty. So that was in the wild, wild west days of no zoning, hence the right of the property line. If there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Alec, do you have a drawing that shows what's legal and what's just out, what we're granting the variance for, or something that?
Yep, so this is showing, I think is what you're asking. This is showing where the garage is at now, so we're in the property line. A little close, almost four feet off the rear property line. And this is what the applicant is proposing with the one foot off the property line on the side here with the same rear yard setback.
So they're moving it one foot more in compliance, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, so it's technically bringing it, still not in compliance, but bringing it more closer to compliance, that is correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if I understand it correctly, part of the request here is to widen the garage from the prior garage to a twenty-two-foot wide rather than a twenty-foot wide, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Would it be the exact same dimensions? It would be two, two feet wider.
Okay, and so potentially, if the twenty by twenty rather than twenty-two by twenty was presented kind of a like-for-like in terms of the same size, that could be placed at three foot without requiring a variance. Is that correct?
Ask that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right now, as I understand it, the request is that for a one, for a variance for a one-foot side yard setback rather than three foot.
Correct.
And it's a twenty-two-foot wide garage. And so if it was a twenty-foot wide garage rather than twenty-two?
No, it's currently twenty by twenty, and so they want to make it wider because that.
I'm not doing a poor job of explaining myself.
Okay, sorry.
If instead of a twenty-two by twenty garage, they had replaced it with a twenty by twenty garage similar to what they had, but they were still rebuilding it, that whole thing could be slid over two feet so that a variance would not be required. They could have a twenty by twenty garage and a three-foot side yard setback and have the edge of the garage be at the same spot it's proposed to be with this twenty-two by twenty with a one foot. Am I understanding that correctly?
I understand just what you're asking. It'd be tough to say if the intent for widening the garage is to also, with the combination of the one-yard setback or one-foot setback and the widening of the garage is just to make it even more easier to maneuver a second car in there. But that'd be a further question for the applicant.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you.
And there's no issue from what I'm looking at, from what I saw from the measurements, there's no issue with the distance between the house and the garage that we, because I think it's a ten-foot or absolute cut-off for that.
Yeah, correct.
Alec, in your, in your comments here, you said that in the first comment under A, it says this, this is a problem that is often stated for detached garage setback variances. Do we usually grant variances for this type of issue?
It seems like, I mean, I don't think you should base it upon other, other ask. You know, I think each, each request is unique in its, you know.
Right.
In its own way, but it does seem like.
Generally?
Yeah, generally.
Generally. All right, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up and speak first.
Steve Capadonia, twenty-seven thirty-three Albert Drive. I think to answer your. I think to answer your question, I tried to draw it so that you could see the angle of the car in the upper drawing, right?
Okay.
So it was necessary to actually expand, to move the garage over one foot off the lot line, which was to accommodate a little bit of eve, there's no eaves currently, it needed to actually expand the garage in order to get the car in at the angle, so the two extra feet to twenty, twenty-two feet was necessary to accommodate the angle of attack, so to speak, to get her in there. But I could build the exact same twenty by twenty garage right on the lot line, again, of course, that'd be no problem, but I just thought for maintenance, and just to give a reading room for the neighbors next door, to come closer to compliance, an extra five foot, I think it would be appropriate.
Just so I'm understanding what you're saying, is the, it's difficult to get a car into the garage with the position proximity to the house, so in order to be able to get the car into the garage in the way, that's where you're saying you need the extra two feet?
Right, by moving the garage further this direction, you need a wider garage to park the car at the angle, basically. The only other option I, kind of, some I thought about was actually the angle of the garage itself, but that didn't work.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you explain that again, when you were talking about how the, you had, the garage would have to be moved over because of where the lot line is and how that?
Sure, so this is existing, it is written on the lot line, so it's a twenty-foot, twenty by twenty structure right now. So a parking pull-in, a park at a decent angle, you know, fairly easily, but every time you move it incrementally this direction, the garage, the car is at a bigger angle, basically, when you park it, so that's why I needed to expand the garage, but it doesn't give me any extra storage space, it really does allow the car to easily maneuver in and out of the garage, park at an angle.
One's going to be like this, and one's going to be like that, right?
Yes, yeah.
That makes sense.
What, what's the dimension between, if I, one of these days, I'm going to figure out how to use this, this green thing, the dimension between the, the back of the house and the garage in terms of, right there, do you have a sense as to how far that is? I'm just trying to get a sense as to how much room there is, once you're past the house, to actually start to maneuver around, because you're explaining that that's a challenge, and I'm just trying to get a sense, a better sense for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not have that, I'm on air right now.
Okay.
I have to provide a number?
I did look on our GIS system, and it looked to be about fifteen to seventeen feet.
Yeah, it was about the length of a car, if I parked the car right up against the garage, I could walk around comfortably to the back of the house.
Alright, anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this agenda item? Bring it up here and answer for motion, please.
Motion to approve the variance request for a side yard setback of one feet instead of the required three feet for the reasons set forth in Mr. Misker's memo.
Support. We have a motion and support, comments?
I'll speak to this first, I'm a little bit torn on this. On one hand, I, I like variances that bring our garages more into compliance than what exists there, and we do have some, some history of kind of like-for-like variances with regards to garages, and I appreciate the, I think better now than I did before, the concern about, about the entry angle as, as being a, a challenge here in terms of why a garage needs to, you know, potentially needs to be put closer to the side lot line as opposed to moved further into the yard, and not require a side setback. I'm still, I'm still a little bit questioning whether or not, kind of consistent with my question before, whether or not a, a twenty by twenty garage that was, that was moved so that it started at that three foot without requiring a variance might still be acceptable and from the standpoint that it ends at that same point to the, well, I guess, from, from this direction, I don't know whether I'm looking north or south, but it kind of ends at that same point into the middle of the yard, but I hear the applicant saying that, that the issue is, is the cars end up getting parked in there crooked, and you're not really coming in there straight, and so that's, so part of the reason why the space is helpful is because you do have these cars, the car coming in at an angle, whatever car would be parked closer into the main part of the yard, and so I, I think I'm willing to support this because it, I, I do think that it, that there are some, some special circumstances in terms of the location of the existing house, in terms of this bringing the garage more into compliance, I don't think this is a, a tempting game, the system here by the applicant, but I'm also open to hearing what other commissioners have to say.
Anyone?
I think, I, I like, of course, that it's coming more into compliance than before, and I know that, I understand what, Matthew, what you're saying, Commissioner Walters, and I think that with that three foot, with the twenty foot garage, and just, this is just eyeballing it, you know, because that's all we have really, is, I think the angle would be too severe, I think you do need that extra space, because you're going to have the car at the angle, the same angle.
Possibly taking off your fender. Or, or the corner of your own house.
Or the side of the house, right.
I read some of those. And I look at, I asked a question while closing this, the house, because those are the ones that have caused problems in the past, we need to make sure that we keep that clear and, and don't waver on that, so those are often my most ruling concerns in terms of these detached garages. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Or say no. So it passes, thank you, thank you for waiting. Alright, next item on the agenda is agenda item eight, public hearing final reading of an ordinance amended to the end section five thousand seven five E to chapter fifty, change of small cell wireless facilities. Who's presenting?
I'll go ahead and start, so we saw, we saw both of these ordinance, ordinances right in the introduction.
Yes, we have number nine, too, yes.
Yep, so they're kind of tied right together here, the first, the first one is with respect to regulations in the zoning ordinance, which requires a public hearing, the second one does not. So just to kind of give the highlights of the cover memo that you have there, this is a change that has occurred across the country for the deployment of five G technology across the country, and in particular, in Michigan, the state statute, which is Public Act three sixty-five, amended three sixty-six, is more restrictive than the federal FCC order. So it's important that we understand that we have to be in compliance with both the state and federal regulations. We've had some, some really good conversations and had some really good information that's been submitted by some of our residents, and I see one of them in the audience this evening, where I think we would like to be, but unfortunately, with, with the restrictions that we have in place from the state statute, some of those other aspects of the local ordinance are just not possible for us, for us here. That's not to say that we can't have some additional items that we can adopt as far as the permanent self goes, but that's what we're really up against, so it's really is settled from what that action that was taken by the state legislature, and really, going forward, that's where I think it'd be appropriate to direct some of our concerns about being our citizens or any of you. We did take this back to the infrastructure committee, we had a meeting on October third, we did invite one of our residents who represents the group that was here this last time, Lisa Teet, oh, I said that correctly?
Yeah.
Who's also here this evening, I see, and she shared quite a bit of information, which I think is helpful with respect to, in particular, a lot of the health and environmental concerns that I think most of us share with respect to this technology. Again, our biggest hurdle is with respect to the, the legal ramifications of what we do and what we don't do. I did, since the last meeting, also reach out to the City of Grand Rapids, who has summer passed an ordinance that's also compliant with respect to the state federal requirements, and the, they did give me results of their RF emissions testing, which I included in the memo here, which they now have on their website, too, just to give you that spectrum that the emissions are less than six, six percent of the FCC threshold. Now, I also understand that that FCC threshold has been on books for quite some time, and may or may not be depending where you sit on that, on that, on that issue, but it gives you an idea of where we're at, you know, range. Just to highlight some of the items that are noted in chapter fifty, that we have to have to be in compliance with the state statute and fed, and federal regulations, that the, any poles cannot exceed forty feet in the right of way, and not exceed forty-five feet above, so that's where the, typically, those locations of those five G units are placed. I just wanted to note that our zoning code in our residential zones, the max height of a, of a, of a home is thirty-five feet, so I know there's some concern, and probably certainly still could be with respect to the height of those locations, but I just wanted to put that in perspective of what that max height is. Also, it's limited in, in six cubic feet for those, those apparatus deployments, so that's certainly very similar to, is from, from an aesthetic point, it's very similar to, or actually smaller than what you see for transformers that are on those existing consumers' poles throughout the community. Chapter fifty, again referencing the permit, which would be to come, may impose reasonable requirements regarding the materials we're arranging or screening or landscaping, so that's where we get into looking at as far as the permit process, what we would look at for those types of applications respective to gas light village and residential zones, those types of things. The, getting into chapter seventy-nine, one of the aspects that we can require in the permit process is a certificate of compliance with the FCC rules related to RF emissions, so again, we can require that as part of the permit process for whatever the proposed unit is, to give us, you know, what that rating is, and we can also, separately from that, the city could follow up with some testing, I don't know what that cost is at this time, but we certainly can follow up with that when we get to the permit process, if we get there. They also have to provide proof of easements and other permits that they would have to secure, because this, this would require inspections from our electrical inspector, et cetera. The chapter seventy-nine also would require, that would be embedded in the permit process, maps of the locations, so provided, we, in the memo, to the City of Grand Rapids' location map, where, where we can take these locations, and make that available on our website as well, but again, that would be part of the permit process that the ordinance allows us to, to enact. Then with respect to moving locations, the ordinance and the regulations, if we have the ordinance in place, does allow the city to move the location seventy-five feet in different directions, and that's generally to accommodate, making sure that a, if a requested installation doesn't end up in front of someone's house, we typically, similar to what you do in the traffic code with street signs, would be locate that along the, the property boundary if possible. There's a bond requirement for restoration of damage to the right of way, it does note, which is consistent with the state and federal guidelines, that can't be closer to eighteen inches from the sidewalk or curb, and that's, future installations would not be, be able to be located within ten feet of any driveway as well, so I think those are the high points, and I defer to our legal counsel, we have attorney Tim Lungrum here, and also city attorney John Huff.
Tim may have some comments, just a couple minor things I want to point out, I think that we concluded at the end of the most recent infrastructure meeting, that some of these things, because of their nature, such as the spacing requirements and the appearance requirements, would be better placed in the permit, because the permit process is much easier for us to modify on short notice, so for instance, if a court decision comes out that's favorable to the communities and unfavorable to cell companies, our ability to quickly, you know, change standards or raise standards would be easier done in the permit process. So I think we feel we have the ordinance, ordinances, I should say, where we'd like to have them at this point, and that we have things covered in there that need to be covered in there, but some of the, you know, the work is unfortunately not done necessarily at the end of this evening, if you adopt the ordinances, because we still need to come back and get the, the permit approved. I think we've supplied you with a copy of a, a permit that was developed by the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council, it's a great format, as you know, it's quite detailed from what you've seen, but we would anticipate adding some additional details to that form as well. I think it's our opinion that we would like to get the ordinances in place so that we have something on the books, it's not as critical that we have the permit ready yet, but we will have to be diligent, because anytime a request for a permit comes in, we have a very short shot clock to comply, we'd be refocusing our energies on the provision to that document as soon as we get this ordinance, these ordinances in place. Tim, have you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think those are, those are the main points. As you say, the, the ordinance is designed to give the city maximum flexibility, the, a lot of the specific requirements in terms of places where you are allowed to, to impose regulation can be done either through the permit or through requirements that are enacted by resolution and put on, posted on the city's website and referred to in the permit, so there's different ways of handling that, different communities are handling that differently across the state, but in one form or another, it's, generally, what we would recommend is that you don't enact them via ordinance, because that's, becomes clumsy if you need to try to, try to alter them. So the, the ordinance really serves as a framework for, for giving you the legal authority to, to enact those requirements, but then those requirements then are, are, are put in place through kind of administrative processes of the city.
And one other thing, I, if I could remind you, the, the number eight, the first ordinance in five seventy-five, that's in the zoning ordinance, so anytime we need to change that, we not only have to have several reasons here, but we have to have several meetings at the planning commission, which means that probably a two-month process minimum, and realistically, it's up to four months, so that's one of the reasons we would like to minimize the items that we have in there, the things that we think will be less likely to be modified. That doesn't mean we might not have to modify the ordinance, I'm not promising you that, but it is a reason that some of these things like the spacing requirements so forth, we think are better done in the permit.
Yes, I have some questions, some of the things that Doug mentioned that, that we've looked at, talked about, that you, you want, you want to come back and put this in the permit area, like we talked about, having a notification requirement to send out notices when a permit is issued to advise residents of the installation, and the RF certification meets the FCC requirements, you have them provide it to us, and we can provide it to others. So where should we put this type of thing, and the city can, Doug talked about having a public location map, is it, should we put this in place somewhere saying that this is going to happen, or is it just we instruct them to do so? What's the, what's the best way to get this done?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you-
Make sure it doesn't get lost.
Sure, ideally, you would want to have the information publicly available, and you would want all providers to know what the requirements are when they came in, just for the sake of fairness, I, I think, so that you would be able to say, you know, our process is open, and providers all know, you know, we're not hiding the ball, providers know what the requirements are when they come in. And for some of the easy FCC requires, that they be, that they be published, or whatever that means, they don't define that, so, so that means, I think, at least made publicly available in some form, so, for at least some, some of the requirements, such as aesthetic requirements, for instance, so those, so, you know, I think, in general, the require, I, I would recommend that, that, that all of your requirements that you, that you're going to put in place, just be simply provided on your website, and that can be done either by putting them in the permit and putting the permit on your website and saying, you know, here, here's the permit that's required, and if you, if you're a provider and you want to come into the city, download a copy of our permit and, and fill it out and submit it to us, or you can say on the permit, you know, the, the permitee hereby agrees to comply with all of the requirements in, in the, that are posted- all of the requirements in, in the, that are posted on this section of our website and, you know, links to the website that, where those are all, are all-
Yeah, I guess my, my question is the, the process for this. So I would have, if I didn't know what we're struggling with, I would have said, okay, let's make sure that we include in this ordinance we're writing that, that the people that are putting it out have to do this and they have to provide this and they have to do this, but it sounds like you don't really want us to do it that way. How do we make sure, other than, I'll tell Doug, but that not, we're not all voting on this is what we want to have happen, like what the extras are there? Am I making sense?
Yeah, there are certain things that are-
This is something that could be a conversation I'd have with Doug and, and I would rather have it where it's a vote, where it's confirmed.
Sure. I, I think I would suggest that the form of the permit probably should be approved by, by, by the commission and, and there's going to be certain key information in the permit. So for instance, the form of the permit that you saw will, will have in there, an exhibit, an attachment, attachment A, I think it's preferred to as, that, that says, you know, here is, here are all of the sites that are being approved by this permit. So, so that permit will require that the provider show where all of the sites are that are going to be approved by that permit and will contain drawings for what those installations and facilities will look like, drawings or photos of it, so that you will know, you know, the, here's what we're approving in terms of appearance and here are the various specific locations that we're approving to be installed. And so that information will all be included in there, so there won't be any surprises for, you know, in terms of, well, okay, then now we're going to install at these additional five locations, for instance. The, and then as I say, it should also say, either include, you know, here's the aesthetic requirements that we're going to have, or it should say, I, you know, the provider hereby agrees to abide by the city's aesthetic requirements which are hereby incorporated and those are going to be referenced on your, on the city's website and will need to have been developed by, at the point at which the permit is issued. So, you know, those, those provisions will need to be, will need to be, I, I think agreed upon and included and, and there will be-
Steph?
Yep.
That's my question. How do we make sure that we get that in front of us to approve that this is what we want to do? I want to know, you know, when we are listening to zoning parents, part of our ordinance says that we will send out within, was it three hundred feet? Anyone who's around that will make sure the notices go out to there. And if Doug's out of town, somebody has to do it, they can look it up and they can say, well, this is within three hundred feet, I know what this is. And I don't just want it to be, yeah, we talked about that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, no. That's your part of your direction to staff, I think, is reference- Right. So part of what he's referencing, what we're referencing is that we will have, we will have a, a draft permit before you all soon and the-
And this will be part of that?
Correct. The ordinances, they, they reflect that there will be permits, so-
So you do want this in part of the, the permit instructions you're putting together that we will look through and vote on? And because I would have, I would say that that would also include, I want, that map you talked about I think is a good idea and the RF certification that they give us that and then we post it, you know, just having those things on there, I think that that would be helpful.
And I think one-
Thank you, I'm sorry, and that's very eloquent, that's what I'm trying to do.
One of, one of the aspects too, if you look at, if you look at the, the GBMC model permit, one of the, one of the aspects that we want to have, that we will also bring to you guys in the draft order, look at is also a checklist, because when you look at multiple pages in a permit and you're dealing with our experience dealing with telecommunications, you've got to have something instead of trying to dig through the document to find those different aspects of it. We have a cover page that goes with that that really spells out the notification requirement that we put in place, the RF certification, et cetera. So the, the main potatoes will be in the draft permit, we're going to utilize that Metro Council draft, but in terms of making it more crystal clear to the telecommunications companies and the general public, we will, and for staff, we'd like to have, we will have a draft that actually has at least a bullet pointed as a checklist for, for those different requirements that we discussed.
And is, is the thought process that that would go through infrastructure for review or so, and maybe it would become even a consent agenda item where we'd pull it out if we decided we wanted to discuss it?
Yeah, we run through infrastructure first and then back to, to the full city commission. And I would anticipate we'd like to have something probably by the end of the calendar year to look at. The good news is we don't have any pending requests for installations, we only have one in these Grand Rapids, but we'd like to have, in our conversations with, with legal counsel, we'd like to have something in place so that if we get requests, we have that framework there and we'd like to get it buttoned up, but we'd like to have that framework there in place so that we don't have any other installations or we don't have any regulations that we can.
Sure. And, and I don't mean to cut you off, Mayor, if you were still asking more questions, Mr. Lundermire, but I-
No, because we're going to, I just want to make sure that we're going to have a chance to, you all agree on that, get it in place.
And, and I was trying to understand the, the extent of any time sensitivity around the permit, so, you know, understanding that we don't have any pending applications right now, if we got a pending, if we got an application tomorrow, do we still have this twenty-five day period where we could create a permit process and apply that to that application or is it really by kind of waiting to put the detail in the, in the permits, we, if anybody were to apply before the permit was finalized, they really wouldn't be subject to any sort of further regulation or restriction that we might include in the permit? Does that make sense?
No, I, I, I think one of the advantages of having the ordinance in place is you, you have a legal, you have a legal framework in place and you, you can, I think, then go to the provider and say, look, we're, we're in the process of developing a permit, we're basing it on the Grand Valley Metro Council with, you know, forum with, which all of the major providers are already familiar because many other communities have permits that are based on that, that process. And, and say, you know, work with us on this and, and, and we'll, we'll work, you know, we'll, we'll work through the, the timing of this. And, and I expect you'll get some flexibility from them and you probably even some, some work, you know, you can probably get some flexibility on the terms of those, of those as well, so that if, if you've, you've got twenty-five days to, under the statute, to give, to tell them whether it's complete or not, you have sixty days to approve it. So you've got a little time there to, to work through the, finalize your own permit and, and then you might be able to buy some time with them to, some additional time which, you know, maybe will get you through the, the time you need to finalize your own permit process as well.
So I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, this was my understanding after leaving the infrastructure meeting, is going forward with this is the safest thing we're doing for our community because we, by accepting this, are then allowed to, to modify it, because without this, they can do whatever they want, right?
Yeah, if you don't have a legal framework in place, the risk is that, that you don't have an authority, any authority to regulate them, actually.
So this gives us that authority by having this in place. And then at that point, heard Doug's suggestion in our, talking at the infrastructure meeting, it's best served to tweak that and put those restrictions in our permit process so that we can work with those on the fly. And then also take into the considerations, because I know Lisa Teet has had two, I've been to two wonderful presentations and the concern everybody's hearing is, is health and what can we do to keep everybody as safe as, as safe as we possibly can, you know, given that we have to fall in line with the FCC rules and then also Michigan State law. So, so what I'm hearing, what, from what I'm understanding, that this is the safest step we can take right now and then we'll take those other precautions in the permit process and, and go from there.
Yep, that's correct.
So I, I have a couple of questions for you. It's not, it doesn't pertain to the permit piece, but it's more about what's in the actual ordinance and what we can and cannot regulate. And I'm wondering if we have the ability, or if, maybe if it already says in the ordinance, do we have the ability to designate how high these nodes can be? So for example, if we have utility poles that have the power lines attached to them that are probably the highest poles in the community, that are well above the height of a home, would we be able to designate that to the telecoms?
So, yeah, I, yes and no. Let me say that. You can, you can designate co-location on existing poles and you can, you can, there's language in the state act that generally people were concerned at the time this was passed because providers were coming in, there was one provider in particular that was coming in and saying, we want to install a hundred and twenty-foot poles and people were horrified because they said, we don't want a hundred and twenty foot, you know, a hundred and twenty-foot monopole are, are they're massive, right, in terms of the width of those things? Saying, you know, we don't want that coming in and being installed in a residential area, they're just, they're huge and ugly. So, so there was a lot of pushback and people said, okay, okay, we could put a forty-foot height limitation on it because that's sort of your typical residential pole, it's around forty feet. So that's, so that's where we ended up in the, with this legislation was like, you can put a forty-foot limit on it. There's, but you can certainly go above that if, if you wish to say, you know, if there's existing poles that are sixty feet or seventy feet or something in the community and you want to have them, you know, up, up at those levels to avoid being on a, on a level with, with a residential structure, that's fine. What you may run into if it's a utility pole is, you know, there are, there are electric code requirements that the top part of the electrical poles are reserved for specific purposes, right? So the, the, electrical poles are reserved for, for electrical lines, the lower sections are reserved for cable and telecom and other types of lines. So they, they may be limited from accessing the very top of the poles because those are reserved for power lines. So there may be electrical code requirements that prevent them from using those, at least the very top part of those poles. They might have to, to go in lower sections of those poles, but that might, you know, that might depend on who owns the pole and what is on that particular pole and those, that might be, and those are kind of site-specific factors that'll have to be weighed when an application comes in.
Are there, are there other communities that you're aware that have those, those hot, very, very tall, very high poles that aren't necessarily like a, like a tree, that would be really thin and unobtrusive?
Well, a, a pole that tall has to be large around in order to-
Support it.
To support it, yeah.
The physics of it.
Yeah, okay.
I think in terms of the stealth locations or sometimes some of those, those requirements, it, it is a possibility in certain settings, like downtown Grand Rapids where you have buildings, et cetera, or where you currently have deployments of four G antennas, you see some of that on tops, on the tops of buildings, et cetera. I'm not sure the specifics of this technology and some of those exact locations, they probably have to be in or the perimeter of a facility from what I've seen. But I think in terms of, getting back to, getting back to the deployment in, in East Grand Rapids, I think one of the advantages we have is that we are, you know, ninety-five percent single-family residential and though we can't request, per the state statute, we can't request any business information from the providers, we certainly can see how they've been deploying in some of our neighboring communities and, and we can't predict the future, but it appears that it's, it is more densely populated areas, more commercial districts and doesn't seem to be being deployed into neighborhoods. Now, I say that and then two years from now, that's what they'll be, so I, I just want to caveat that by saying that it would be nice if we could have known what their business case is, but we're specifically prohibited in the state statute from making those requests from those companies. But at least we can see, at least the deployment strategy as it is today appears to be, as noted.
All right. So I'm now going to open where you are doing the publication.
Public commentary, yeah.
Okay, so for agenda items eight and nine, we are doing those at the same time, so if you have any, open the publication, if you'd like to make a comment, please come forward, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa Teet, I live on eleven thirty-one Pine Crest. And this is my third time speaking to some, second time for some of, for the rest of you, so I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to continue the conversation. I am in support of an amendment. I understand and am appreciative that it gives the community additional protection that we currently don't have as well as flexibility as you guys have noticed, or have noted, noted. My, what I would like to mention here is that I think really the devil is in the detail in terms of what are the qualifications or what are the items that we are putting in the permits. The things that I'm thinking about specifically are schools, our schools closest to our children. I think that you guys are probably aware of the current lawsuits pending both in Sacramento, California, as well as Chicago in terms of cancer rates, incidences, cancer clusters within schools where there are four G towers close to those school grounds. Every five G installation has a four G antenna or on top of it, so we're adding four G intensity into our neighborhoods in addition to the five G rollout, so that is incremental. The other things that we have talked about in the past are setbacks, so I think it's important to consider strong setbacks, especially with schools, but also sleep spaces, which essentially means residential. And then you guys brought up in terms of, in terms of putting some regulation in place of the different telecoms because they are not co-mingling infrastructure, how we get them to, how we roll out five G in a way that isn't completely blanketing our whole neighborhood. I think we all know that East is a community of choice and I want to, I want it, personally, I want it to remain that way, and so I'm urging the commission to really think about what are, what's the actual details in, in the amendment. I have offered a free pro bono attorney. Her name is Daphna Tocover and she's an expert in five G small cell, including local ordinances, state and federal law, and without working with somebody who has domain, domain knowledge, fully understands the laws, municipality rights and existing precedent, precedents, it's likely that we are not going to get there with our amendments.
Thank you. Thank you for giving so much time to this. I know it's a passion. Fairly new to the community, I believe, so I appreciate it, tapping in. So let me ask that question. So is there anything that we can do with this that would regulate where they could be relative to schools?
Well, you can't zone them out of school areas because one of the, one of the things that you can't do with the statute is enact anything that effectively prevents or prohibits them. What statute says is you can't allow, prevent them from serving any location. So, you know, the statute allows you to move them to seventy-five feet, basically, so now if you can move, you can move them seventy-five feet one direction or the other, but you can't prevent them from serving any particular location. So if you could move them enough, you know, seventy-five feet one direction or the other and that would allow you to move off away from the school, you know, that's enough and then, then you could do that, but it's unlikely that that's going to be enough. So I, I, I don't, you know, I, so I think the answer to that is probably no, under the, under the state statute.
That's what I'm looking for, is you know, ones that, we are, we are being handed a lot to us, this is what you are going to have to do, so I, I don't want to go down the road that we're just going to end up getting chewed up on.
Well, yeah, I, 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 unfortunately, the state statute has left us in a place where, where if we try to regulate it outside of, of these boundaries that were given, we were just opening ourselves up to litigation with the providers.
And are any legacies at the state looking at this, working on this, trying to make the changes back there? Probably the best.
There are four states right now looking at this, New Hampshire, New York, Oregon, and, forget, the fourth one. And there are multiple states that have already enacted ordinances and resolutions while looking at the health effects as well as suing the FCC. There are people personally in the Grand Rapids area that have worked with the telecoms that have been able to rescind a permit or been able to remove the five cell, the five cell installation, the five G installation that's been by their house as well as other locations-
cell installation, the 5G installation that's been by their house, as well as other locations like schools. So we can have a protective amendment and then have a conversation with the telecoms and understanding, you know, why it wouldn't be appropriate to put it within 500 feet of a school. There has been, that has been successful. And there is currently no known case where the FCC is suing any municipality or state, but there are lots of incidences right now where municipalities and states and schools now going the other way in terms of suing the telecoms for the location of their placements.
I guess my question was, really, it sounds like the state of Michigan is more restrictive. And so to make it easier would be better to change that overall law for the state of Michigan.
And I, I think to get to Attorney Lundgren's point earlier too, and to kind of dovetail into what Ms. Teet is saying, is that, you know, if we get an application, we see there's a location by a school, though we can't necessarily regulate anything, any move further than 75 feet, we certainly would say, hey, you know, what, you know, what else can you, can you do? Is there any other location or another pole that you could co-locate in this area? And that's where we get into some of those other things. Now, we may not be able to force them, but we may be able to, to have that sort of, I think as she noted, we have, had a dialogue, we just can't make that part of the law-
Got it.
-at this point in time. But certainly, that's the kind of approach we take with any sort of providers we look at. You know, even if you can do something, is that really the best approach?
Yeah, it's in the context of issuing the permit that you'd have that dialogue and say, you know, can we, can we have that, can we move that site somewhere else? Can we move that?
Yeah.
As, as a practical matter, you, you noted in, in your memo to us, the, the statute, and you, you pointed out that we, we can't have requirements that prevent someone from serving a location. But the statute does allow for reasonable nondiscriminatory written spacing requirements or general applicability. So we can't target schools specifically, but you can have generally applicable spacing requirements. From a practical matter, maybe we discussed this before, I don't, I don't recall, how close do these supposedly have to be together in order to kind of cover space and not have a gap in location?
Right, and that's, that's just it, because all we can see is the, the development patterns that are existing in other cities, because we can't request that information from them. So I, I've seen different things out there on the internet, I just don't know what to believe, right?
100 feet or so, I mean, is what you're hearing?
Yeah, I, it's hard, it's hard to-
Hard to say, because they can't, as Doug has said, you can't ask them what their business case is.
Yeah, they, they actually have that carved right, put right into the state statute, because I think they anticipated we'd all be asking those questions. So we can't even ask that question. I think what our, our best approach to that has been to look at the deployments and kind of see where, where that's playing out, okay?
So do you, do you kind of, you kind of read that 75 foot, right, move within 75 foot as almost being kind of a presumption of that's the, that's kind of what the statute says is, is reasonable for spacing? And if we, if we went beyond that in the permit, we'd be running at risk in terms of if we had bigger, larger spacing requirements than that?
Well, I mean, that, that's certainly the, the, the area in which you're guaranteed to not run into trouble, right? You know, beyond that, beyond that, it's, it's a negotiation. And, you know, in terms of, in terms of where you might, you know, run into litigation, I, the FCC isn't, doesn't sue anyone. It's the providers that do the, and, and they have sued the city of Rochester and New York over their ordinances, so, Verizon, yes. So there's, you know, there is litigation against municipalities in other states. There hasn't been any in Michigan.
Okay, so we have had a reading, we've had public comments, and John, you suggested we handle these through certain motions. So may I please have a motion for number eight?
Move to adopt the ordinance amending to add section 5.75 E to chapter 50, title five of the city code pertaining to small cell wireless facilities as noted in agenda item number eight.
Support. Any additional comments? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. So it passes. And number nine, agenda item number nine. Make a motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance amendment to add chapter 79D to title seven of the city code to regulate small wireless communication facilities per agenda item number nine.
Is there support?
Support.
Any comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. I just do ask that you come back when you get the permit part put together, so we can make sure that you're covering-
What's a reasonable time period for the community to expect something like that? Well, I, I think, as I noted earlier, I think by the end of the calendar year, I think we can have something to sort of move that through the infrastructure process first and then full work. So I would anticipate sometime in December.
Or at least some update to say, well-
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
All right, good. Last is the consent agenda. May I please have a motion about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support. Any comments you'd like to have made? I would like to, I do want to call out the pilot program for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, beacon up at, up at the high school, right?
Yes.
That we're talking about. So we have talked about this for a while and I'm happy to finally get this through the infrastructure committee and here to vote on. And we are, so we'll be seeing this and we'll have it in place for several months to assess its effectiveness. So this will be something that you will be able to press and it will flash. Is it also run off of solar, somewhere?
That's correct.
Yep. And so with you, it will flash, let cars know that you are waiting to cross at that particular spot. And it was chosen after lots of research and lots of thousands of people. Thank you for all of your, all that, that'd be interesting. Okay, so-
Can I just ask the question, how soon we're going to actually see that?
Um, depends on how quickly we can actually get something shipped here. The, the proposals that I've received are, they're below the purchasing threshold of $5,000, so I'm ready to place the order if this is approved this evening. And so it would be a matter of how quickly that gets here and then the staff. I think we probably can expect some time here in November, my assessment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Okay, it's passed and we're adjourned. And anyone that wants to help stay and set up, would be very much appreciated for the vote tomorrow.